Okay, now we're good.
Now we got them.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello?
Yep.
There we go.
There we go.
All right, uh.
Do I need to remake the motion, Mr. Chair?
No, that's, I think that's fine, no.
Okay. County Board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The county board observes Robert's Rules of Orders for its meetings, so please obtain the board chair consent before addressing the, the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off all cell phones or turn your cellphone to vibrate. Thank you. Open forum, Beth, is there anybody here?
There is no one, Beth.
No one?
Okay. There is nobody here, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. What would the board like to do?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. All right, we will move into County Administrator, Monty.
Amanda. If you just want to minimize Amanda this, uh, go to, please, yeah. And your presentation is there, so. Thanks.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners. I want to take a moment to recognize this morning our most recent project, um, award. And Kevin and Julie Johnson are the owners of Fi- the 539 Building, um, 539 Properties. And, um, they recently won a, um, the Project of the Year Award, um, from the Economic Development Association of Minnesota. Um, they will be here to say a few words, but I wanted to share with you a little bit of the background of the project. Um, Benton County was instrumental in, in, um, making this project go and get off the ground, so I wanted to share a little bit with you. Um, so Kevin and Julie had a vision back in, uh, twenty eighteen to revitalize the east end of St. Cloud through the purchase and renovation of the former International Harvester Building. Um, this is a beautiful historic building that dates back to nineteen twenty-eight. It's located right, um, next to the Amtrak Station in St. Cloud on the east end. Um, this project, uh, aligns with Mayor Cliss's recently announced goal to revitalize downtown St. Cloud. The project was identified as a catalyst site in the city's east end, um, s- vision, small area planned in twenty nineteen. Um, this particular renovation on the city's east end triggered other developers to purchase a handful of properties along the, um, East St. Germain Street in the past year, which we've certainly worked on many of those projects, um, through our organization. Um, the recent renovation has really single-handedly, um, changed the trajectory of East, um, St. Cloud, um, and which was kind of e- economically distressed. And it now has some planned housing, retail, and other projects. The renovation was to prepare for very, two very unique businesses. Iron Street Distillery, which, um, the county played a, a role in their project by offering them a, a microloan, um, for their renovation of their building. And then Harvester Square. Um, this is, uh, the event space located on the east side of St. Cloud. So these businesses certainly had added some gritty character and charm to the east end. I wanted to share with you, um, the video, uh, that ISG put together for this project and which was presented at the Economic Development Association of Minnesota, um, con- Winter Conference, um, a few weeks ago.
Project of the Year, 539 Building. With a vision to revitalize the east end of St. Cloud, 539 Properties purchased and renovated the historic International Harvester Building to drive development and economic impact throughout downtown. The sixty-four thousand square foot building, originally built in nineteen twenty-eight, is now home to two local businesses. Iron Street Distillery and Harvester Square. With the distillery on the main floor and the sixteen thousand square foot event space above, the building highlights its original industrial architecture while blending modernized finishes and touches throughout. Following the twenty-twenty-three openings, surrounding businesses and neighborhoods have plans to invest in the area's revitalization. The project involves significant collaboration with the City of St. Cloud, Benton Economic Partnership Incorporated, Benton County, and the Initiative Foundation. The recent renovation of the 539 Building has driven positive economic impact and single-handedly changed the trajectory of St. Cloud's economically distressed east end, which now has planned housing, retail, and other projects, earning them the Project of the Year Award from the Economic Development Association of Minnesota.
This was a really wonderful project, um, and we should be all really, really excited, uh, that we are kind of changing that trajectory of east end of St. Cloud. And, um, I wanted to invite Kevin and Julie up here to say a few things about their, um, project and also share with you the award that they received at the Edema Conference, so, thank you.
Well, thanks, Amanda. Uh, Commissioners, uh.
Morning.
Wonderful to be here. Julie want to pass it around, so.
Could touch it, yes.
And of course Commissioner Hyden actually had got his hands dirty on this project, believe it or not, so he was, uh, very involved with it. So, uh, again, we want to thank, uh, thank, uh, the county for, for helping with this award. Of course, uh, this was never in our plans to, to be up for an award like this, but it, uh, certainly is a great honor and, and we're nice to have the recognition to do this, uh. Of course, this didn't come without a lot of help along the way. On number one, of course, Amanda, and she's been there really from the beginning. I think she's been through every walkthrough, uh, with every tenant, potential tenant, uh. She's been offered some guidance on some financial, uh, information with the city and some zoning help. So she's really been a, a great resource for us and of course with BEP, so. And like, and the city, uh, as well, you know, they've, they've offered some financial support, uh, which certainly helped. You know, the May Street Revitalization Program, uh, was a great help to us. And, and really it's a, a testament of how when you, when you can get some money towards projects like this, what it can do. So, um, I would like to leave you with, uh, I, I've got a fun little story and, and this is, you know, a building like this, uh, such an iconic feature in the area, you know, International Harvester's got a great history, not only in, uh, St. Cloud, but around the country. When it was built in nineteen twenty-eight, they were the fourth largest corporation in the world. I mean, that tells you what, what kind of a, of stature they had in the, in the area. And this was the fourth building in the St. Cloud area, the biggest, of course, so. But, uh, i- it's fun when you, when you work on a building like this, you get a lot of people that, uh, have lots of stories about, uh, you know, the history of the building and what went on in the past. And in nineteen twenty-eight, when the building was built, it was, uh, uh, built for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which, you know, and it's all relative, right, for, for the terms like that. Um, but I ran into a gentleman of, a couple of months ago. His dad was, um, um.
The Donald?
No, no, anyway, he was a, a big realtor in the area. Well, he had this building listed for sale in the mid-seventies, mid to, to late seventies. And I gotta believe this is probably a low point in the history of this building. He had it listed for sale for thirty-five thousand dollars. I mean, that's how much the decline was, of course, you know, this is after the, the oil embargo, uh, a huge billing like that, you know, who wants to heat a sixty-five thousand square foot building and what are you gonna do with it? Because, you know, that end of town was really dying, so. So fast forward now till today, uh, with the money we've invested in there, and that building now is worth millions of dollars. And this really is a testament of what, what economic redevelopment can do to an area, so. So we are, again, happy and proud to be part of this and, uh, we're really looking forward to a great future in the east side, so. Thank you.
Thank you. We, I think we all should be proud.
Yeah, congratulations.
Very good times.
So just to give you kind of a, an example of how awesome this award is, um, so the Economic Development Association of Minnesota takes a look at projects across the entire state of Minnesota, and, um, they settled on this particular project in St. Cloud, so. It was, it's really quite the achievement. And so I just, uh, want to make sure that we recognize all the work that they've done, um, through this project and then with the help of the county and the city, of course.
Very well deserved, very well deserved.
Uh, I would like to say one more thing, and I talked to Commissioner Hyden before the meeting. You know, with all the accolades and awards that the county is getting right now, I, I think we really need to leverage this and, uh, and bring some good news to the county for once. I mean, everybody's, all over the news is all about the bad news, but.
Yeah.
We definitely want to try and promote this and, and maybe get some people interested back in Benton County. And this would be a good catalyst for that.
Yeah, and just one other thing, Kevin, you've been instrumental in the, uh, in the BEP, uh, partnership and it, it goes a long ways. Look at what you, look at what people can do with, with BEP and, and some of these, uh, funds that are out there. Uh, this, this could be a very big revitalizing that, w- with, with revitalizing the, the east side. It is, this is huge.
If you look at it, it not only takes the knowledge of knowing what's out there, but it takes the actions of people like Kevin and Amanda to get that done. I mean, you can know all about them, but if you don't have any actions on it, we know where that goes.
Yeah, and, and people think, oh, there, there was free money given, there's no free money given. There, there's a lot of money that goes in from the investors to, to make something like this happen. And, and I can tell you, I think we all appreciate it very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Great job.
Are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay. Uh, I think, let me just get the. I believe my, I'm the next item, Mr. Chair, is a request by BEP to discuss the development fees contacted by Amanda. And it sounds as though, uh, uh, the BEP President, that's Sandy, uh, Saldana, uh, has asked to meet with a couple of board members to discuss county development fees. For example, um, conditional use permit fees and land, land use fees and building code fees and so on. And I think the, the desire is to look at our fees and what we could do possibly to help encourage additional development in our rural areas. So I wanted to ask if, if you all are interested in having that kind of conversation with BEP and which board members you would like to see be a part of that.
Mr. Chair, I got a question. Is BEP, Amanda, are they gonna have some board members on that also?
Yes.
Do you know who they are at this time?
Um, I'm assuming it's gonna be Si- uh, Sandy Saldana, our president. And, um, I'm not sure if it'll be, I'm not sure who the, the second one will be.
Okay.
At least be two.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to be a part of that if possible.
Um, I definitely want to see a rural commissioner because Sandy Saldana's on there, I'll motion for.
I would recommend Commissioner.
Johnson.
Johnson with his role in, uh.
Cause most of our, most of our fees don't include the City of Sacra, but they include rural Benton County. And so if, uh, Sandy wasn't on there, I would team up with him, but that's probably not a good idea.
So was that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, okay, we got a motion to appoint, uh, Commissioner Hyden and Commissioner Johnson to a BEP, uh, we'll call it Fees Panel?
I'll second.
Any other nomination?
Commissioner of Development's gonna be involved too, or the Department of Development.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other communications or nominations? Okay, any more communication or nomination? Last time, anymore? With that, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. You have Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Hyden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mrs. Chair, I've sev- have let Roxanne know about this discussion, so she's well aware, well of it. So we'll, we'll be in touch about.
Okay.
About dates, okay. I think our next one is the sales tax exemption for Government Center project. So I wanted to see if the board is interested in us pursuing legislatively a special exemption from the state's sales tax on construction materials for the Government Center project. I included, uh, in the packet, uh, an example. It's copied on the backside of the agenda item, uh, an exam- couple of examples of where local governments received uh, one-time special exemptions from the state sales tax. As you may, if you, you know, I think you've probably heard to MICA. MICA has pursued, uh, a statewide permanent exception for local governments, but these one-time exemptions have been approved by the legislature historically. Uh, there were many, there were actually were ma- many were approved in the last session. Uh, so I want to see, is this something that we want to pursue, uh, during this current legislative session? And get a bill introduced and it might mean, uh, you know, some trips to the Capitol to testify, uh, on it and, you know, that legislative follow-up, so. Mr. Chair, if I could, Monty, um, in regards to the effective date, it's, it's talking about June thirtieth of twenty-one through January one of twenty-five. Are we okay on those dates? I mean. Um, are you looking at? Pushing at the envelope on. Again, these are just examples, of course, the dates would be customized for our own. Okay, alright, I just wanted to. I just want to kind of see, show you how, how this has been addressed legislatively, but yeah, we would customize the dates for our purposes. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Chair, does it do, can it go on for a longer period of time? Like, if we don't get to that point, will it carry on?
That's a good question. I, I, you know, I posed that question to Matt Massman. And Matt said he would help us introduce, get a bill introduced. I'll have to ask him that question about, you know, what's the timeframe the legislature is comfortable with, I don't know.
Monty, in our conversation with Matt the other day, it almost sounded like these are pretty much easily passed through legislature.
Right.
If the last session's in indication, right, again, I think there was twenty-something of these, roughly twenty, twenty-five of these that were approved during the last session, yeah. Mr. Chair, I don't know if you're looking for a motion or you just want. Just looking for consensus, is there an agreement to launch this?
Yep.
Okay. Knowing again, we'll, again, might require a few trips down to St. Paul. We might be going there anyway for bonding purposes.
Yep.
So.
Add it to the list.
Exactly.
Next, um, the Park Commission has made a motion to, uh, add a representative from public health to the Park Commission. I believe if I recall the discussion, the, the desire there was that public health could help bring to bear uh, grants that could be utilized in parks. And, uh, I think that was the benefit of the representation on the Park Commission. So I wanted to pose this question to you all, is that something that you're comfortable pursuing, a change to the ordinance? The, the other issue, question is, is up to this point, all Park Commission members must be county residents. They don't necessarily have to be resident of the district that they're appointed from, but they, uh, they must be a county resident. So I wanted to ask, how do you feel about that? Do you want to waive that requirement for the public health representative that they? Cause, you know, it, you've got your sort of pool of public health employees, some may be residents, some may not. Um, so that's a question I wanted to pose to you. How do you feel about that?
I, I don't know, like, from my standpoint, y- you're, you're talking about public parks within the county and the people that are on these boards are within the county. It, it behooves, I think, to try and figure out somebody that could be.
Could be on there, yeah.
Live within the county.
Yeah.
I would agree.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I, I would have to agree. I had a conversation with Jaclyn about this. You know, I, I guess I have a question for Jaclyn. How many people in public health actually live in the county that would actually be willing to do this? Do you have an idea? If you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
No, that's fine.
Um, yeah, I think, you know, our public health department definitely understands the standpoint of having the employee or the person who's on the board be from the community that, within Benton County. We do have other staff on ship, um, that could participate, that do live in Benton County. As far as how many staff live, I don't know all of their addresses, but, um, but yeah, I think that we would have some, you know, we could look at it. You know, the other thing is, is, you know, do you want public health maybe, you know, considering being as, as consultation or advisory member? Maybe not a voting member, so to speak. Um, you know, we do a lot of work with our statewide health improvement partnership around how to create, you know, healthy and thriving communities. And the park space is a really good opportunity for bringing that staff in and using them as a resource as far as working with communities on creating spaces that are walkable and bikeable and promote healthy and active, you know, physical activity. Um, so I think it would be a great resource, but we could work with you guys on figuring out who might be the best fit for that.
Mr. Chair, uh, uh, would it make sense to you to maybe have that as a consulting position to start with? See how that goes and really go after somebody who lives in the county? And if we can't find that person, maybe we have another discussion to approve, you know, that position outside of it?
May- maybe there's somebody within the health department right now that.
That's what I mean.
Would want to do it. Maybe we'll let them go back and figure out if there's somebody in the department.
Right.
That would be willing to do it, and then if not, then we go to the consulting.
And, and Commissioner Poppy, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe it would be a nice start, like you said, Jaclyn, to have some type of, you know, I, I'm sorry, I didn't remember the term you used, but you know, public health would consult or.
Right.
Talk with the Parks Commission versus a voting membership to start with. Maybe you could see how that process goes, you could always add them as a voting member.
Yeah, I, I agree with adding them as a voting member, probably, we, we sit on six voting members right now, so, um.
Seventh would be important.
Seventh would.
Would be nice.
Would be nice. Um, I think everybody that's represented came before the Parks Commission in the past, has been a member or a resident of Benton County. I don't believe anybody, you know, trying to think back of who all is came. Um, I think Heather did and.
Mr. Chair, I, I would, I would recommend that we put, uh, somebody on the pub- on the Parks Board from Public Health as a voting member and then let Public Health determine which one that can, which one could be that fits in to the county area.
And there's, I got a lot of trust in the Park Board that they'll.
Oh, yeah.
See fit, do what needs to be done.
Yep.
They're not gonna get carried away on any particular subject.
I guess, Mr. Chair, I could go along with that. I, I would really like it to, that they would understand that the intent is to.
Right.
Have somebody on there from the county.
Correct.
If you can't find that person, then maybe let's have another.
I guess, yeah.
And then bring it back.
And I would, I would kind of hope that if it's not somebody from Benton County, then I guess I would try to exclude them from voting.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah.
I would go along with that.
Mr. Chair, I may, just one note, the, kind of some context or background on this request. It came from our previous ship coordinator, who was a public health staff and a member of Benton County. That individual is no longer here, and so we looked to have our current ship coordinator, the new person who took over that role, be this person. Um, but that person happens to have worked here for a long time, but just lives outside the county border. So that's where the question came from, but, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
I, I'd like to. Direction, I would like to make a motion to, uh, appoint a member of Public Health to sit on the Park Commission Board. And that member to be a.
County resident?
County resident.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other communication? I'll, I'll say one thing, the, the, the reason that I'm on, on board with having somebody within the county in the public health department on this board is there's a lot of things out there that we've been dealing with, as in cannabis, you know, all, all the different stuff, there's, so some of this could be being voted on by somebody that doesn't live within the county. So I think it's very key, but. Nope, I, I think we're good, we got a motion and a second. Any other communication? Do you?
No, no, I think you raised a good point.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Well, it's about time of year for department head evaluations, and, uh, I don't think we've ever done them exactly the same way one, two years in a row. But that's okay, um, there's no necessarily right or wrong way to do department head evaluations. So I wanted to ask you all, um, how you might want to have those done. One suggestion I have for you possibly is just simply bring in each appointed department head for a, a, a closed session of the board and, uh, for just some discussion back and forth. Talk about, you know, give them some feedback, talk about goals, that sort of thing. It doesn't have to be this formal process with lots of paper and, and forms and so on and so forth. It just could be a, a good discussion in closed session, so. I want to see, was that something you all feel comfortable with?
Yes.
I would recommend that myself.
The informality of it would be nice.
Right.
So if I recall correctly, someone is gonna be gone the next meeting in February, right? So we probably should shoot, shoot for the, is the first meeting in March? First meeting in March? Gonna be okay? Is ever gonna be here for first meeting in March? March fifth?
Yep. Should be, yeah.
Okay, so we'll do closed sessions and it'd be then, uh, it'd be myself, uh, the IT Director, Human Services, Land Services, Public Health, and then County Engineer, those folks for closed sessions. So we'll try and keep the rest of that agenda as short as we can, because this could take up, you know, hour, hour and a half or so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For individual?
One option is you could, we could, we could scatter them out. We could have, you know, two or three on the first meeting and two or three on the second. But wasn't someone gonna?
I'm, I'm gonna be gone on the second.
Second meeting.
Yep.
So what do you think? You want to try and do them all in one day?
Let's.
Get them all done.
Let's try to get it done.
Okay, so that, did you say March fifth? March fifth, okay. So, uh, again, just informal discussion in closed session.
All right.
And Monty, from my standpoint, I, I would really like to see a, a lot of emphasis put on goals.
Yeah, bring your goals, let's talk about goals.
In a perfect, in a perfect world, here's what I'd like to go forward, here's what I need support on, you know, stuff like that.
I know we tried to do that in the past, we talk about goals, absolutely, sure, okay. Let me move on here, so, um, gonna do a little presentation on open meeting law, I'm sorry, remote, remote meetings. Okay. Let's see here, um. So, Mr. Chair, uh, I recently participated in a seminar by MCAT on remote meetings. And it was a really excellent one. It was done by their, um, in-house attorney, Sonia Gugamus. And, uh, they did a really job of boiling it down to really the essential elements of what, what's allowed for remote meetings. So that's what I tried to do with this presentation, is keep it very straightforward. So basically, you can kind of see up on the screen there, there's three ways you could do remote meetings, and I've got three colors, blue, green, and yellow. So let's, let's get started. So here's the first one, let me just go with, um. So this is the first one. Actually, this provision's been in law, Si- Sonia said since the nineties. It's been around a long time. And it's called Remote Means by Interactive Technology. And here's some of the key points about this one. So, uh, all, all, four of the five board members could be at a remote location and it must be open and accessible to the public. And here's another key part of this, is all members must be able to hear and see each other. That is a key. So for example, you couldn't just call in by phone, we have to be able to see and hear you. All votes must be by roll call. And if you're gonna be at a remote location, we've got to publish that location three days before the meeting. So here's some things that came out of the, the commentary from An- from MICA. And, and they said, you know, this really should be a policy decision of the board or whether or not you allow this. So for example, you know, one board member couldn't just demand and say, hey, you know, I'm gonna be remote and that's the way it's gonna be. It really should be a decision of the governing body whether or not you allow this. You know, you want to put any parameters on, any conditions. Um, and I was kind of thinking, you know, what if you were an organization, you didn't have any of this technology, but you had one board member says, well, I'm gonna be remote. Does that force that organization into investing all the technology to make that happen? We're fortunate that we do have it. Uh, again, the published location must be remote. So let's just say, for example, you're traveling, you're not exactly sure where you're gonna be on board day. That wouldn't work. We have to know your exact location. Um, again, there's no limit on the number of times you could participate remotely. No limit on the number of times. And if your home is a remote location, if someone knocks on the door, you need to be prepared to let them in in, in your own private home to participate or, or observe. And this is an interesting thing that came up from the, the seminar, a location. And this is an interesting thing that came up from the the seminar. A location outside the state is acceptable. Uh, Sonia shared, it was actually Department Administration Advisory Opinion. It was on the city of Cohasset that they had a member that participated remotely, and I think someone, maybe the local newspaper challenged that. And there was this advisory opinion from the Minnesota Department Administration that says the law illa- it's allow, it did, there's no, there's nothing prohibiting that. So you could be in a location outside the state. So uh this probably is the one that might be used, most likely to be used. I guess my thought for you all is, if it's something you're seriously considering, I think that there should be some discussion beforehand about, you know, do you wanna allow it? And under what conditions and circumstances do you wanna allow it? Uh, maybe put some parameters on it. But again, this has actually been in law a long time. Questions about this one? Option number one.
Commissioner Pop? Well, I know, I know one county, particularly in southwest Minnesota, and this was during pandemic. They physically had their Chair of the Board come in for the meetings, but all other ones were option. Um, I believe that uh Sherburne County does it with limited number of times per year. Um.
Think it is.
It's three times.
And you know, I I I'm not interested in doing this if we're gonna have a county board member that's gonna be, say, you know, we have twenty-four meetings and twenty of them he wants to be remote or she. That that's not gonna work for me. But, you know, I th- I I think if you have a uh a county board member that's on vacation or uh wants to spend a month in the south, I think that's typically, we're okay with that.
Mr. Chair, would it work to massage it in a way that you, I mean, you're probably looking for some policy statements? So, but you probably wanna stay away from them. For example, I'll use myself. The next board meeting, I'd like to attend virtually, but I need to have approval at this board meeting ahead of time so that you know there's gonna be a virtual meeting, giving up with one of the commissioners. Is that something we could, instead of limiting it necessarily? You know, like I already know, next meeting, I'm gone.
Yep.
And I could make a choice and I'd like to be involved. Do we need permission from the full board to do it as individual commissioners? Cause that puts the, then they can't just do the twenty out of twenty-four on their own.
Right, yeah. And Monte, for, this is, this is actually alarming because I, as somebody that travels a lot, I I miss a couple of board meetings a year, just because of my travel. Now, I do, I I'm with Commissioner Pop. I do not wanna see somebody doing twenty from from remote. I I mean, I am, but I also look at it and go, you, there's a lot of things that could come up that you don't want the public to know. I.e. health issues or something like that.
Yeah.
That you you're trying to.
To the health, it'll help the health condition here in a second.
But but with that said, I think the the, if if the board chair is gone, it automatically goes to the vice chair to run it, even if that board chair could be um remote.
Remote, correct.
So.
I don't know necessarily, you know, that, you know.
You can see, if you have to see and hear.
Yeah, I don't. I I think if you chose to do it that way, you certainly could. You know, again, Robert's Rules of Orders are really more guidelines. They're not just like laws or regulations. It's it's, you know, against a guideline.
Well, I I can tell you from my standpoint, for a couple of times a year when I travel for, I got conferences. I wanna, I I feel like I miss a lot by not being here. And even on vacation, I'll be gone in March on vacation. Y- you miss one meeting and you're you're calling people, what happened? Well, you know, y- you feel like you're left out.
I understand, sure.
You know, Mr. Chair, I would have to agree with you. Trying to run a meeting on Zoom just does not work, you know. A- and I would agree with you. If the chair is on Zoom or whatever technology, it's way easier to have the vice chair run the meeting in-house.
Right, logistically, yeah, yep.
And I I believe, Monte, I believe we did that a couple of times during COVID where the chair was out. And he turned it over at the beginning of the meeting, right?
True, yeah.
To the vice chair because he was, and he just was on screen. This, this is, this is weird because I actually, on last year, it was on our radio board meeting. I what got told by an individual, I couldn't be on there because I would, I would, they couldn't post a hotel room. I'm like, it's public, I'll open the door.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's no, there's no definition in the law about what means
Okay.
Open and accessible. So I would just apply a reasonableness test.
Yeah.
You know, uh, is it reasonably open and accessible? Um, so there really isn't, I'm not aware of necessarily any guidance or cases that were cited by MCIT on this particular issue. So I I suppose, you know, you may wanna think about what would meet the public's sort of expectation or test of what's open and accessible. That's something I suppose to think about.
Mr. Chair, you know, in September, I'll be gone, both meetings. If they wanna fly out there in the wilderness, that's fine. Open it up.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So I guess, you know, if the board is interested in allowing this, having, you could either approach it on like a case-by-case situation where a board member says, hey, you know, I'm gonna be gone in that meeting. And here's where I'll be, and here's my, gonna be my location. Are you all okay with it? Great. Or I, or you could possibly, you know, talk about it again at some other time and have more of a policy in place. I I don't necessarily have a recommendation for you there. I can't feature this necessarily being used a lot. Um, so you could just approach it on a case-by-case basis.
Well, you you just heard three commissioners say that we would, we would like the opportunity. Right. We liked the opportunity, but I still want some policy. I want a number of meetings that is set before the beginning of the year to say, you can only do this six times or whatever. Yeah. Because otherwise, you, I can tell you what could happen, you know, there's thing, you could.
Yeah, we're one board.
Yeah.
And move it forward to the next.
Right, you could have somebody that's gonna do like twenty out of the twenty-four. That's not gonna work.
You know, you might, you might wanna have some discussion too about what would the board find as an acceptable location. Um, you know, maybe just bounce around some scenarios and some what-ifs and say, hey, you know, does that seem reasonable? Does that, does that look okay? Yeah.
I think we should have some more discussion on that personally.
I I agree.
Yep.
Okay.
Well. Maybe I.
You're gone next, next week. No, no, that's fine. And when he talks about reasonable, I mean, I'm gonna be out of the country, so that's probably not reasonable.
Well, and and that's a, when I'm on vacation, I probably don't, I set those up two years ago. I probably don't wanna join when I'm on vacation. You might want, not wanna waste that time on a county board meeting.
You know, the the advisory opinion in MCAT's guidance discussed specifically in a location outside the s- state. And the instance that was used in that case was, I believe, the, it was a city council member that was in Florida. Uh, there was no discussion about what if the the person is out of the country.
Yeah.
Um, this was more confined to someone who was within the United States. Again, the instance of it was Florida.
Yeah.
So.
Well, the other part, Mr. Chair, that you look at is, so if, say, you're gone and one of the other four is ill or unable to attend, it's really hard to operate with three.
It is.
You know, so that would give the option.
That would so give you.
It doesn't make it nice.
Okay.
I think we'll do more discussion on this, but.
Discussion to be, to be continued. Okay, we could have it maybe on a Cal agenda. All right. Technique number, or option number two. Um, this is where you're allowed to uh participate remotely from a non-public location. And this actually, there was a recent change, legislative change that that addressed this statute. So, and uh this is where you're experiencing a health issue or a member of your family's experiencing a health issue. You can participate from a non-public location, not more than three times per calendar year. Um, this, let's see, fourth bullet point down says, if a member is advised by a healthcare professional against being in a public place for personal or family medical reasons. Um, so going on down some of the discussion from MCAT, it really should be a policy decision. Do you wanna allow it? I could see it might be kinda hard to say no there. Hey, if someone has a health issue, kinda hard to say no. Uh, a location outside of the state is acceptable. Um, there is no three-day notice requirement. That kinda makes sense. Obviously, someone gets sick, you know, suddenly. We can't possibly give you a three, give a three-day notice. And there's no requirement to provide wr- written documentation. So there's, yeah, I'm, it's like, you don't have to give me a doctor's note. Um, you know, that wouldn't be necessary. We'll take your word for it. So again, this is limited to not more than three times per calendar year. And it can be, again, a non-public location, so.
Um, what, any communication on this one? I don't mind this one at all, because things do happen.
I, you know, and part of me says, and and again, I don't wanna go where Commissioner Pop was talking about multiple absences, but is three enough? I don't know. Could have an extended.
Again, this is stat- this is statutory.
Yeah, statutory.
Three times, yeah. You may recall, thi- this, this aspects of this law have been on the books for a long time. What changed was, it used to be, you could only use this if there was actually a public health emergency. That's the only time you could use it. That, that condition was removed. That condition of being during a po- declared public health emergency, that was removed.
So Monte, I'm gonna, I'm gonna play devil's advocate here. These are in statute right now. What what prevents any board member from saying, I wanna go to that? And even if you don't have the votes of the other board members, these are.
Yeah. Well, like I said, I think practically speaking, it's tough to say no. If someone says, hey, you know,
That's what I'm getting at.
You know, my spouse is 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 ill, uh, they're at home here, I'm taking care of them, but I wanna be able to participate. It's kinda hard to say no, but I think you can. I mean, I think you can assert and say, look, you know, this isn't something that we find acceptable, uh, for whatever reason. Um, and again, I kinda go back to my example. What if you didn't have the technology? Then, what do you, are you forced to then buy it, that technology? Um, I should s- stress here again, there, you must be able to hear and see the person, so it can't just call in.
And you can't hide your camera, or you you, I mean, you can't, you gotta have a camera.
Cam on, we have to hear and see you. Yeah, you bet. So, all right, last method. This was probably will be less likely used. It's been on the books for a long time. And this allows uh remote meetings in the event of a, of a pandemic or what's called a chapter twelve emergency. That's an emergency declared by the governor. Um, so um this is probably the least likely one to be used. In other words, if there's ever another pandemic declared like COVID or some other statewide emergency, then, you know, governing bodies could all re- meet remotely. You just need to have like either, you know, it says here, your chief legal counsel, like your county attorney or your mid-county administrator would have to be present here. But then you all could be remote if necessary, and your, your locations don't need to be publicly accessible. So, um yeah. So again, I think this is probably the least likely to be used. Uh, there had to be those conditions of a pandemic or this, again, chapter twelve emergency, so.
I'm, I'm gonna say that all of these make sense. The first two for sure, and I've heard it from numerous commissioners out there that they don't, they don't want this to go away, like the option for
Yeah.
the remote meetings, because it saves time, it saves travel. I mean, it it saves a lot on on especially these outside board meetings that we're involved with.
Yeah.
You know, people are coming from all over the end of the state. We were just down in Winona, not that we wouldn't go down there for that, but there's a lot of travel that could be.
I I'm really surprised that more organizations aren't using this first option. I don't think many are.
No.
Uh, it's, it is the most permissive, I think, because it's unlimited number of times. Probably what's holding people back is that remote location must be open and accessible to the public. That's probably the the hard, the hard part.
So any lobby?
So, yeah, I think if you were sitting in a hotel lobby, that would be, that would be okay. Yeah, yeah. So it sounds like, again, more discussion later on this issue, maybe come up with some policy and some parameters for it.
Okay, I think, I think the sooner the better on on a lot of things. I know it it won't help Commissioner Johnson right now, but I think uh, I think the sooner the be- and I think we're gonna run in, if you're out of the country anyway, I don't think that's gonna per- permit.
Yeah.
But.
Okay, got it.
Cause we do plan kinda board meetings around if there's a, there's a topic that's coming up that i- it could be contentious. We want everybody here to get everybody's opinion, so.
Yep. Okay, okay. Read them in mind? Well, you have about a thousand sheets of paper in your.
High level.
Packets.
High level.
High level, last three years.
All right. Okay. So you've got a, a report in your packet that looks kinda like this.
Yeah.
And this shows balances, so I'm gonna go real quickly. So, um this shows balances at the end of year, and I highlighted for you. Uh, this is two thousand twenty. So at the end of two thousand twenty, there was fifty thousand hours of va- of vacation and PTO, sixty-three thousand hours of sick leave. And there was some comp time, about twenty-six hundred hours of comp time. That's in a twenty. In a twenty-one, it's, you, I think you're kinda interested in trends. This is kinda, you know, up and down. It's not necessarily all trending upwards. And that year, the PTO balances and vacation balances went up. Sick leave went down a bunch from sixty-three to fifty-eight thousand. Uh, twenty.
What was the vacation again?
Vacation, PTO was fifty-two thousand hours. It went up a couple thousand, but sick leave went down. Um.
And comp was, went down a little bit.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah, comp went down a little bit. Um, this is twenty, I'm putting on the top of there, twenty-two. Um, so the down, the bottom cell is twenty-one. So you can see trended down again in the twenty, in the twenty-two. Balances went down. And some of that could be explained by turnover as people are leaving and they're cashing out their severance. That that could be some of what's going on there. Um, I did not dig into the details. Uh, that's my speculation. It's it's uh people that are leaving and cashing out their severance. So it went from fifty-two thousand hours of vacation to down to fifty-one, fifty-eight thousand hours of sick leave down to fifty-six. And then the final the final sheet is twenty-three. And, um looks like vacation, PTO about the same, and then sick leave balances went down again. So not like necessarily a consistent trend up. It's kinda up and down and and so on. Um, it's a lot of hours though, sitting on the books, so that's for sure, in terms of vacation and PTO, um, and sick leave.
Okay. Questions from the board?
I have one.
Commissioner Swinging.
Um, with the paid time off, do they, um get that actual time off or they just get paid for the time?
Sure, well, they can accrue, uh, folks who are on the PTO system can accrue up to a maximum of seven hundred hours. And it stays on the books as long as you're here. Uh, they don't go over seven hundred though. Uh, and then when, when they leave employment, that's all paid out. It's all paid out in cash at their, at their rate of pay at the moment. Otherwise, it's, it just stays on the books up to that seven hundred hours. So, yeah.
Mr. Chair, is that, is there, is the seven hundred, how was, how was that ever determined that that's maximum amount? I mean,
You know, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Pop, um, as I recall, um this, this is two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, when PTO was brought on board. We looked at other county PTO programs. Um, I think there was a desire. You think about an old vacation sick leave system, you gotta have documentation of why you're taking sick leave and so on and so forth. PTO allowed us to get away from that. You could use PTO for any reason. Um, one thing too is though, when we went to the PTO system, is our severance maximum went down a fair amount. So under the old system, you can cash out almost a thousand hours of vacation and sick leave. And under the new system under PTO, it's down to seven hundred. Um, you know, I think, uh, when we first started the PTO system, it was definitely generous. It tried to sort of provide folks with a comparable amount of leave as they were getting on the old system of vacation and sick leave. Um, but that was kinda the environment at the time. As you may, I'm sure, were you here in two thousand and twelve?
Nope.
Okay. You know, I think to persuade folks to move from the old to the new system, it needed to be fairly generous and so on and flexible. Um, and people were actually offered the opportunity to move from the old to new. I'm not sure many did though, but as you may know, any new employee hired from an after two thousand and twelve is on the new system. I think I looked at this, about two-thirds of our employees are now PTO employees, so.
I mean, that's, you know, if we make a change or try to, um, I mean, I think it's very generous, the seven hundred hours. And if we make a change, you know, you gotta allow existing employees to switch to something or new employees as they come on. It'd take another ten years to pull this down if we thought it was too much or more.
Mr. Chair, I personally don't want these thousands of pages in front of me. I I like what was just given right now in front of me. And if we have more questions or concerns, we can go ahead and look further into it.
I would agree.
You know, I I You know, I, I wanna thank Jackie for doing all this, but I don't need those thousand pages to look through.
Mister Chair, if I could, Monte, can you help educate me a little bit here, how we got to today? Where we have some exempt employees that are receiving comp, how did we get to that spot? Exempt.
Um, also, you're a salaried person, um, that's provisions been in our personal policies as long as I've been here. Uh, to allow salaried exempt employees to accrue up to forty hours of comp time, um. You're not required to, the federal labor law does not require it. It's just been on the books. I, I don't know the history, Commissioner Johnson, of, of why our county added it many, many years ago, but it's been on the books for a long time.
So any, any exempt employee could receive up to forty hours?
And that varies actually, I believe with, with, uh, for example, with human services, that was recently bumped to fifty, in the course of negotiations. Uh, but for your non-union, your non-union exempt employee, it's forty, yeah, yeah.
Clarification, Monte, that's forty, and then if you use twenty in February for, that you earned in January, you can go back up another twenty.
Right, you can fill the bucket back up. If you emptied out, fill it back up.
So that forty could be a hundred and forty at the end of the year.
Right, there's no maximum annual accrual, it's just you can't go above, once you hit forty, then you don't accrue anymore, right?
And, and then also hypothetically, employee could, excuse me, Mister Chair. Uh, comp time when they're on vacation, they wouldn't have to use their vacation leave?
That's true, right, you could use up your comp, and you probably should, I mean, you should use up that comp time first before.
Not really, because then you can re-earn it. I, it's a slippery slope here.
I, I suppose that's true, I mean, if you did, uh, work a lot of overtime, you may not necessarily need to tap into your vacation or PTO as much. Because you've used in your comp time, right, yeah?
But it goes, I, I, I think we need to dial into our policies on how overtime is, is approved then.
That was gonna be my next question, cause you haven't gotten to overtime yet, right?
Excuse me?
You haven't gotten to the overtime stuff yet. I'm getting to that now.
Chair, while we're on the comp time. Is that, do they just get that paid out, do they ask for it to be paid out, or do they take time off to get it paid out?
It varies by union group. Uh, for example, with our highway folks, uh, they can accrue actually up to a hundred and. Forty or fifty? Hundred fifty hours of comp time, and that's not cashed out at the end of the year. There are other folks though, uh, in other organized bargaining groups or. Or non-union, it's cashed out at the end of the year. So it kinda depends upon the group and the, the labor agreement.
I wanna make one comment, I, because I don't wanna alienate workers that are putting in hours that are very well needed. You look at Sheriff Heck out there. I, I, from my personal standpoint, when you're out in an accident scene, just because you're time up, doesn't mean that you leave. You need to stay there and continue that through. Um, same thing with, with the plow guys, you know, they don't get, they don't get to stay home at Christmas when it, when we get a foot of snow. They gotta be out there, so there's a lot of things that, that go into this, so I, it, we're just dialing in to figure out. Get our, get our hands around where we're, where we're currently at.
And, and, so moving on, Mister Chair, if I may, so, this is basically the last page. Of the comp time and overtime reports that you have in your packets. And what I tried to do is, so here's two thousand twenty. And comp time on, on the top, overtime on the bottom. And then my handwritten is this, is the total, so in two thousand twenty, seven hundred ninety-one thousand dollars of comp and overtime paid out. Twenty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-four hours of comp and overtime paid out in two thousand twenty. Okay, and we'll just go right through each year then. So we'll lay that on top of there. Two thousand twenty. One, um, now we've got a grand total of nine hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand hours. Of comp and overtime. That's twenty-one. Twenty-two, actually. Dip down a bit, nine hundred thirteen thou- thousand dolla- uh, nine hundred thirteen thousand of, oops. Paid out twenty-two thousand hours, so there was a down, little bit dip downward in twenty-two. But I guarantee it came roaring back in twenty-three, okay. So here's twenty-three. So twenty-three went down to twenty-seven thousand hours. And one million one hundred ninety-six thousand dollars of, of overtime, again, comp time and overtime paid out in twenty-three.
Now, from my standpoint, I know this can be deceptive, because if, if we're down individuals, and people need to pick up. Um, hours for departments, it, it. Sure, we're paying overtime or comp time on it, but we're also down staff that would have generally had that. Is there any way of getting to that in the future to figure out, you know? Let's just say we got two hundred and fifty employees in the county. In two thousand and twenty-three, we actually had two hundred and forty-five. You know, and, and it, you know, kinda go through.
So the, the extent that vacancies are driving, driving.
I think that's, that's key to, to show too, because.
Well, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Monte, or Commissioner Pinzkey, if you take the twenty-seven thousand one hundred eleven overtime hours for twenty-three. Divide that into a full-time of two thousand eighty hours, that's thirteen FTEs.
And you know, I think it's actually, actually probably more, because if you take out, you know, non-work time, you know, of. Vacation, sick leave, and holidays, and all that sort of thing. Probably turns out actually, you know, if you think about. You would actually need, you know, it's, it's a bit less than at two thousand eighty.
The other thing I need clarification on, Monty's, can you walk us through the process of approved overtime?
And that's a question I don't have answers to at this point, uh, that's gonna be, uh, at hope of your next meeting, yep, yeah.
Mi- Mister Chair, with the information we've received in the last two meetings, it proves we need more employees. To, to get rid of the high payout of overtime.
Well, I, I just did some quick math, i- based on, I, I'm not sure, the two hundred and seventy-six employees, I thought is what we just talked about. And if we increase that thirteen, almost fourteen to sixteen people, that's roughly six percent overage. So six employees. That were, according to this, that were.
But adding more employees, I don't think is gonna guarantee that some of this is gonna go away.
Exactly.
That's, that's where I have the problem.
And you're right, Commissioner.
That has to go to department heads. If we add employees, there's, this number has gotta decrease significantly.
Yeah, honestly, it goes to one of the questions that was posed yesterday, do we have enough money to run both the building and the employees?
Could you, could you provide adequate staffing and still afford the building, that was the question, yeah?
Well, I think it goes towards, what's the process here?
I'll, I'll have an answer for you, hopefully at the next meeting, on, on what each department does to approve.
That Commissioner Johnson will be gone on.
So maybe, uh, could you all give me some sense of, of where you wanna take this in the future? In terms of the reports and the.
Just what you've got in front of us.
Oh, the, the, like those, those, uh, summary pages.
Yeah, and, and honestly, if we just have, i- if we just put this on just a little Excel sheet. The numbers from two thousand twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three are not gonna change. It's just, it's filling in the blanks from there on out.
So, um, what about frequency? What, what's the, the, how often do you wanna see? Information, uh, that we've got here?
I think, from my standpoint, we've got the numbers right now today, and I don't think we need them next, next week, or even next month even. It's more the, I think from my standpoint, now we deal into the policy, like how do people get the overtime, what qualifies for overtime?
Who's approving it?
Again, it's the process, I mean, there's obviously legit overtime.
Exactly. There, there's a lot more proven overtime, is what I'll say is, you know, like a, a deputy out on scene or a snow. You know, issue, there's, there's a lot of things that you're not gonna call your, your supervisors, say, uh, it's obviously snowing out there.
It's probably gonna be tough to sort of discern trends, if you're just going like month to month, so you might wanna instead see data. I don't know.
Quarterly.
At the most. Quarterly, okay.
But it really comes down to, you know, for, for the rest, it's, it's, you know, I don't. Things are un- unforeseen, but I don't think we, there's a lot of departments that we probably see overtime coming, and it should be approved. On the front end versus turning in your, 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 uh, time sheet and going, oh, by the way, I had six hours of overtime.
You know, Mister Chair, I, I'm thinking about this discussion about how things are proved and the reality on the street. Of why overtime is worked. I'm, I'm thinking probably of inviting actually each department out here to really. Share with you themselves more directly. Here's why overtime occurs, here's how it's approved, here are the circumstances and so on. I think that's probably better to have them. Give you that sense of, of kinda, you know, the day-to-day realities of what happens, so.
And, and from a business standpoint, where I kinda come from, I get that overtime can be good, because you're paying the overtime rate, not the benefits. So I get where paying overtime it can, can help. It doesn't look like it on paper, but. I just wanna make sure that it's legit overtime, and we're not just building up comp time, used comp time, building up vacation, never using it, you know? There, it's a slippery slope.
Because at the end of the day, it is a liability.
They teach you in business, it's only is, it only comes relevant until you're close.
Right, when you gotta write the check.
So it sounds like again, the future, we're gonna talk about the process for approving, to the extent that vacancies might be causing or contributing to the overtime. And maybe quarterly data, and the summary pages only.
I don't wanna toss some pages anymore.
No, no, well, if we need detail, we can ask for it.
That is correct, yep.
Sure, I mean, we'll obviously run the reports, but just then give you the, those, these pages.
Can, can we also differentiate, like with the comp time, how much. Were they actually able to get off hours to compensate that versus the payout?
So some sense of, you know, are people, how many hours are people taking? I think, you know, these reports essentially tell that story, but we'll, we'll take a look at it, yeah?
Monte, correct me if I'm wrong, if somebody leaves, they, they don't get paid out the comp time?
No. It depends, if you're an exempt salary employee, the answer is no. If you're an hourly person, the answer is yes. Because that's, you know, that's essentially, you think about, if you're an hourly person, you took hours instead of cash. Law, if you work over forty and you're an, you're an exempt, non-exempt employee, we have an obligation legally to pay you overtime, but we've gotta pay that out. But again, if you're a salaried exempt person, no, and that's really discretionary, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, it. I gotta be careful, I say, the salary exempt person, which I am at my employer. I don't get to earn comp time. I get a higher wage to pu- make, make sure I'm putting in sixty hours a week, or twenty hours a week. So, that, I, I do have a challenge with that.
All right, I think that's the last of my agendas.
Okay, I think in, in, uh, in fairness to a few people that have been here for a while, I think we're gonna, um, uh. Step away from the county board, and we'll reconvene after ditch authority, so motion to.
Also moved to turn.
Recede, county board, yeah.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor? Commissioner Johnson.
All right, uh, we will move into ditch authority right away, I'll call that to order, um. And remember, did we do a roll call, I suppose we did, so let's get it on the record. If we could do a roll call again for ditch authority, please.
Of course, Commissioner Shongin, here, Commissioner Heinen. Commissioner Kapinski. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Pop.
All right, we'll move into approval or amendments to the agenda. Chris, anything you'd like to add?
I, I do not have anything to add.
Okay, um, I would like to give an opportunity for those members out here, I, I know there's a couple gentlemen here that would like to potentially speak during maybe an open forum part of this. There is no agenda item for this discussion today, but I know they took the time out to come here today, and allow them a little open forum time, and if it's okay with you. I think what I'd like to do, and Chris, i- you can help me out here, if you wanna maybe give us a little overview. Of that discussion, or would you like, would it be easier just to have them speak to it?
I, I think if they're here, let's just have them speak, so I don't misconstrue anything, um. Yeah, I just let them have their.
Sure, okay, so with that, if you could please come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record. And, uh, we'll take three to five minutes here for some open forum discussion. And again, I just wanna be perfectly clear, Tyler, there's no agenda item here for us to act on today, so we're here to hear your, what you've got to say to us.
Got it. My name's Tyler Marsh, um, Ed LaFors grandson, he's a resident in Benton County, I live in Crystal, uh, you want my full address?
Please.
Six-six-zero-one, Fiftieth Avenue North, Crystal, Minnesota, five-five-four-two-eight.
Thank you.
Uh, so I'm here to give a bit of background information, and I realize I cannot make any request for a change on the ditch. Only my grandpa can do that. Um, this was brought to your commission back in December. Um, I reached out to Chris about the placement of a culvert that was put on. Near a location of where a county road, or, sorry, a township road was. And when you guys talked about that, he said that there was no. Historic documentation to corroborate where I'm saying a culvert would have been. Um, to be fair to Chris, I don't know if at that time I had provided to him the. Uh, supervisor's road order, which I did later provide, um, so. Uh, in a email a little bit later, I don't know if you guys wanna see the email, but he says he reviewed that. And that it appeared to him, this road is located to the north of the property line. When the supervisor's road order says it should be on the property line, or on the line between two sections. And I just wanted to provide a bit of information to show that, I, I believe indeed there was a road there. And that originally during the construction of ditch fourteen, that they would have had to have put a culvert there. So in repairing the ditch, that a culvert should go back in that spot. I don't know how this thing works.
He'll come up, give you a hand there.
Do you wanna see any of this stuff?
He can give you a hand there, he's behind you. Put that on the screen for us.
You wanna switch the, the overhead? So, real quick, here is the supervisor's road order. Uh, I admit I have some trouble making up some of this old tiny scrawl, but the part that I would like you all to see is where they've actually. Um, mapped out where this road is to go, this is between sections fourteen and twenty-three, and that's where they say a road ought to be. Uh, and again, this is nineteen oh three. Um, I found another. Map, this is an old, they call it an outline map of Benton County, this is from nineteen oh three. And I've got a few zoomed in ish, or, uh, images here, this is Maywood Township. And sections fourteen and twenty-three with their road, uh, the legend of this map. I also got a zoomed in image of that, which just says that. Sorry, uh, this double line is, they call it a wagon road, in the supervisor's road order, they called it a highway, but. Um, anyway, again, that's sections fourteen and twenty-three, there is the double line which they're calling a wagon road. Um, in twen- or sorry, in nineteen sixteen. There was another, I believe this was a plot map, they called it. Uh, this is again, Maywood Township. Sections fourteen and twenty-three, and there's the road. Um, this is just zoomed out showing the map that I'm pulling this from. Um, and then recently Chris provided to me some original documentation. From the repair of the ditch, and this is their alignment map. And the, I don't know if you guys can make out where there's a double line, but between fourteen and twenty-three. There's the road, um, so this location is where I am saying they would have originally had to have had a culvert. And for what it's worth, this, this is the original specifications from nineteen sixteen. And I can make this out better on my computer screen, but I just wrote down what it says there. The necessary culverts or bridges that the road crossings are to be constructed, as provided by state law, and then some stuff about the town board, um. So I, I guess I feel like that indicates to me that if I'm showing there was a road there, and I'm showing the specification there, and the specification says. A culvert was there, then a culvert was there, and that's worth, um. I, I think that's a reasonable assumption, I mean, I can't go back and point to it. Now, in an email with Chris, he did indicate that, uh. Now, in an email with Chris, he did indicate that, uh, it appears the road is to the north of this section line. So I, I can show in, bear with me here, there was a modification made to this road. Um, a previous land, landowner, Sam Montgomery, uh, applied to widen and improve this road. And after his work, there are pronounced ditches on both sides of it. So that's one example, and I don't know if. He shifted it to the north, but I think over a hundred years, presumably if one landowner was using it more and maintaining it. That it would shift. Um, so the fact that it is to this, like today, this road is about ten feet. Maybe five feet, I don't know, to the north of the property line. When we're standing on our side, there's a big culvert and a crossing right there. And I'm just saying that the crossing should be on the section line, and both landowners can use it at that point. Um, there is a second culvert that I wanted to talk about, and I don't know how I'm doing on time, but.
You're way over, just so you know.
I'm way over. I, I tend to do that, so, um, I don't have to get into the second one now. If this is gonna be a future agenda item, I'm happy to make my way back here, but.
I, I think if you want to do a brief overview on it, Tyler, that's fine. I, I think where this probably will end up going again, it's open forum, we're not having any action on this today.
Yep.
But at least that, that information's out in front of us, and then I think more than likely, the direction's gonna be to have you continue to have conversations with Chris. And, and set up an agenda item for the future for us to act on, yeah.
Yep, um, so really briefly, the, uh, oh, I found the, uh. This is where he modified the road. Um, I can, I'm happy to provide that to you guys. Um, so there is a second culvert. Um, I want to make sure I show you the right thing. Uh, this was shown to you all at a, oh, sorry, I got this upside down. Uh, this was shown to you all at a prior meeting. They indicate a culvert here, and this one was moved. And this is the one where I'm saying it should be on the property line. And the other, this one that was moved. We wish it was where it had been, and Chris and I don't yet agree on where it was. But I'm working with him to get to the bottom of that. Um, in this email, um, so as it pertains to this one. He makes clear that, um, the ditch, or, sorry, the county drainage authority is not in the business of locating section lines or individual parcel lines. So when I say this one should be on the parcel line, he says that's not what we do. We don't locate section lines and put things there. Uh, he gets to the next culvert, and he says an existing culvert was found near this location. This culvert was shifted eighty feet to better line with section and parcel lines. So it's, seems like it's happening to, by two different sets of. Guidance here, and we're losing out on both. So one of them, I'm trying to say, the road was there in, at the time of the construction of the ditch. And the other one, I'm saying, well, you moved it and you said that you don't move them. So that, that's the gist of it, and. Um, I know I've already forwarded a lot of this stuff to Commissioner Johnson, and if anybody else wants any of this in electronic format, so you can look at it more closely. I'm happy to do that.
Thank you.
Yep. You just hit that button, or?
We'll let Monty take care of that.
All right, we're gonna move into our, our consent agenda, approve or amend the minute, uh, meeting minutes from January sixteenth of twenty-four.
I, I wrote my grandfather's name on there as well, but if, there's no official request to be made today, then.
Okay, thank you.
You can certainly see if you'd like to.
Okay, thank you. So we need a motion to approve or amend our meeting minutes.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion second to approve the meeting minutes of January sixteenth, twenty-four. All those in favor?
I oppose.
It's carried. Chris, move on to you. Consider the change order number three for additional work on the C D six.
All right, uh, you may recall at the January sixteenth, uh, board meeting, January sixteenth, uh, twenty twenty-four, the Drainage Authority. Authorized a change order, a- and the action at that time was to authorize, uh, me to negotiate a change order with our contractor. Up to a price of twelve thousand five hundred dollars, but that action also included bringing it back to this meeting to, uh, ratify. Uh, that change order. So we've prepared a change order form, and that's what we would ask, uh, today, is to approve up to twelve thousand five hundred. Um, I will add though, that in the meantime, the contractor has made it back out there to the project and did do some stump grinding. Um, and, uh, I was able to get out there and take some pictures of this. These are, uh, large pictures, but I'm trying to demonstrate that. Um, it appears that they, in the buffer strip area, once again, not everything in the slope down to the ditch. Uh, there may still be some stumps that, that exist, but when you get to the top of the bank and in that buffer strip area. Um, it appears that they have, uh, a- addressed and, uh, ground any stumps in that area down to the ground line or to below it. Um, the quality, once again, when I converted these to PDF, to be able to just spray here, is not the best. There's an example. I, I know that that's a, that's a picture of a, a, a stump that was ground down to below the ground line within the, um, the buffer area. There's another one, a, a large stump that was ground down to the ground line. Um, these are some pictures of the, of the, the drone. Just to kind of show the overview of the ditch. Uh, this, this work is not from us. It appears that maybe the landowner is doing some work here, but, um. There's the, the ditch in the buffer strip area. Um, just some more pictures, no stumps found in, in this location. Um, once again, there's a stump that was ground down. Um, uh, some wood shaving still exist, uh, on site. Um, this area appeared to be free of any stumps. Remaining above the ground line on, on both sides. Yeah, so with that being said, if the Drainage Authority approves up to twelve thousand five hundred, the, just because that was the action at the last board meeting. I do know based on the hours that the contractor worked, uh, they're only gonna charge us nine thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. Uh, they had two pieces of equipment out there with stump grinders on them, um, and they were going up both sides of the ditch. So I guess that's the, the action before today, is to approve that change order as it was motioned and seconded the last meeting, uh, of twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, any questions on that?
So if we approved the twelve thousand five hundred, but it was nine, what'd you say, ninety?
Nine thousand six hundred and fifty.
Ninety-six hundred, only the ninety-six hundred would be charged to the Drainage Authority, right?
Yep.
To the ditch, okay.
But because we made a motion on the twelve-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly why I brought, it seems goofy that way, but yeah, I just want to stay consistent with the previous actions.
Hey, what do you wishes?
I'll move approval. I'll second it.
Okay, motion second to approve that change order, number three for C D six. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Vinsky.
I, I want to thank, uh, Hellman Escavating for, for being fair on this and going out doing it. I mean, he probably knew we had up to twelve-five, and he was very fair, so I think that goes a long ways.
Okay, any other discussion? Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. Continuation of the public hearing on acceptance of the repair of C D six and assessments of final cost, Chris.
All right, uh, so, um, oh, um, where's the order? Okay, um, in your packet, you should have had a, a findings in order, uh, attached. We just approved that change order. Uh, I will note though, that the final costs of the C D six repair have been increased, uh, by the nine thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. Um, I apologize, I don't have that electronically here. Um, but, um. Uh, yeah, so this would be a continuation of the hearing, and, and I guess we're just looking for, uh, final acceptance of the contract. And, uh, acceptance of the findings in order, um, to, to complete C D six, uh, repair, I suppose, so.
And again, I think that's just, that's kind of the end of your staff report in regards to this.
Yeah, the only change from the last time would be that the total project costs have been increased to nine thousand six hundred, or by that nine thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents, so.
All right.
Um.
So we've heard from county staff, I, I guess, uh, uh, I know there's at least one person here, I see, we, I will open the public hearing again for C D six. Speak at all, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Dwayne Branny, one-three-oh-seven-two-Fifty-Pet Avenue, Nor- Northeast, uh, Graham Township. Uh, I guess I'd just like to apologize to the board if I was a nuisance coming to all the meetings, but it's part, it's good to, if you can get the public involved.
I'm in township government, and geez, you have a annual meeting coming up here in March, and you might not see a soul there.
And the only way you get things, but I think you guys learned a lot, and I definitely learned a lot, but, but went on and did six. But no, now Hellman's, I think, came back and did a nice job grinding. Uh, just, uh, like you say, the slopes of the ditch, yeah, there ain't much you can do with that other than put some, uh, um, brush killer. I don't know if that was put on them or not.
And, and I think that'll be part of our maintenance plan going forward. But for what it's worth, Dwayne, I, I enjoyed having you here very much. I appreciate the comments, and, and you helped walk us through this process. You, you hit it on the head. This was something new for all of us to walk through and figure out, including township officials, county board, ditch authority, and including. Landowners like yourself. So thank you for your input.
And he was wearing two hats all the time.
He was wearing two hats one time, so appreciate that, thank you.
Very professional approach too.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak, uh, during the public hearing of C D six? Final call, right, public hearing's closed on the C D six. Uh, members, what do you wishes? You have, um. Couple choices here. Continue this hearing?
No.
Or adopt the following findings in order.
Do we gotta read everything in, Michelle?
Um, I think I did provide a couple of findings for you, and then if you could read the order portion, and it has been updated to reflect that nine thousand dollar increase.
So just for clarification, Michelle, so under findings, there's one, one and two.
Yes.
Um, you would like that read in the motion?
Not into the motion, but just make those findings, and then motion the order.
Okay, how about A through F?
Yeah.
Part of it.
Read the entire order as part of your motion.
And would you like me to do that as a chair, or do you need somebody to motion that and do that?
I think you could do that.
Okay, so, as I've heard from my members here, uh, motion, or we'll, uh, talk about the findings and the order. The findings, item one, Hellman Construction has completed the repair of, of ditch number six. Total cost of the retainage was two mil- excuse me, two nine.